Made contact and provide them with information. And I'm sure between now and the next meeting on the ninth, we're going to continue to have conversations if, if, if questions come up. But I think others, everyone understands, you know, why, why we're here tonight, you know, this is a big jump, you know, compared to the last five years or so.
Yeah, six hundred and forty thousand's hard to eat.
My understanding is we, we did change dental a number of years ago. But again, we, we want to, you know, you know, when we're looking at ultimate plans, especially ones that we are able to change, we don't want the, the big change.
Yeah.
And now, you know, the plans are pretty similar.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other question? Alderman, well, just go back to the one area when you were talking about bundling three versus, or bundling two versus three. The vision is the one that stood out that...
Yeah, the vision, if we do not bundle the vision, if we do bundle the vision, employees can expect to pay about sixty dollars more a year. On the city side, it's about a twenty thousand dollar savings. So essentially, if we don't bundle the vision, we're saving seventy-six thousand dollars. If we're bundling the vision, we save ninety-six thousand dollars, and that is in totality.
Could I just interrupt on Alderman McCarthy has shown up to the dais.
I would think, based upon what you've told us, I, I would, I would venture to say that we bundle all three. If that's nothing to do with the bargaining and everything else. So in other words, I mean, that, you know, is it sixty dollars a year?
It's, it's sixty dollars and forty-eight cents to stay with Vision Service Plan, which is your current Vision provider. Okay, so to be clear, that's standalone, independent of Blue Cross. So there's an increase of sixty dollars, forty-eight cents for all eighty-five participants. So on, again, on the, the financial, we have an increase of thirty-three, six dollars and thirty-three cents compared to six dollars and thirty cents. So it's a three dol, three penny difference. So again, that's with VSP. If we move to IMED, as Moses pointed out, there is a change to the employee dollars, but the bundling of everything as a whole, getting the dental, the vision, and the life, does offset the overall premiums to the medical. The concern I have, though, is if I look at VSP to IMED, which is Blue Cross's offering, that could cause disruption for the members, meaning I can't match every facility. I can't do that no matter what, but there's a little bit more noise with the vision that we've encountered when we've tried to do this in the past. And your people are vocal, as they should be, it's, it's their dollars, but that did create some, you know, again, vocals, communications back to our team about making the move to IMED. We'll do whatever you'd like, once a decision is made, and with proper communications, we'll enhance, obviously, the pros of IMED, but it does have, again, a change. And it's also changed from the financials, Moses, on the vision.
For example, on a single PPO, um, let's see. Yeah, so let's say that you're a single, you know, let's take a family just for sake of discussion here. The new rate, if you bundle all three, is five sixty-four seventy-two. I'm sorry, let me, let me start again. A family on the PPO plan, if you bundle all three, is seven hundred dollars a month. If you do not bundle all three, their rate is going to be six ninety-six a month. So it's, it's more. If you, if, it's less if you bundle without the vision. So on the, you know, I guess on the, uh, on the health insurance side, that rate, the vision rate is, is more, but the health insurance rate is down. So if you take the new vision, the monthly total is more, even though the health rate is down, because that, because there's an added cost to the employee for the vision. So you're paying more for vision in order to have the health rate down. If you bundle without the vision and keep the same plan, the, obviously, the monthly cost is going to be down, but the health insurance portion is, um, is more.
Higher, yeah. Yeah, so if I kind of do the dollars and cents, just for, again, he's looking at it as a whole, but the IMED with Blue Cross goes to eight dollars and twenty-five single rate versus six dollars and thirty cents today. Or renewal, which is calling for a six dollars and thirty-three cent rate. But as he mentioned, Moses mentioned, your, your bigger line item, including me, as selfish as I was an employee here, is my health insurance. So how do we bring that down if you bundle all these items together with Blue Cross? If that makes it a little bit more clear. So yes, you know, again, we're trying to match up what we can match in the vision to IMED. Co-pays I match for the exams, the materials, the allowance. It's just my network, I can't mirror what IMED versus a VSP. It's, it's, it's close, but it's not close enough, and that's where we hear the noise.
But, but a, a big consideration on changing from VSP to IMED is there may not be as many physicians that people will be able to transfer from one system to another. That, that's, could be a, a very difficult time for, for people.
And I, yeah, you're absolutely right, and I think more so, for example, when you're used to going to an ophthalmologist or an optometrist that's not tied to, let's say, a Pearl Vision or a LensCrafters, you know?
Right.
That's, that's a different, you know, relationship, and I get that. You know, I'm, as my eyes are about to, to crack, I, my contacts are in all day, I want my glasses, because I put them on around this time, but, you know, I'm also one of those where, you know, unfortunately, I had the Cheryl Teigs glasses from back in the day, and I probably still get the ones in the corner that are like, oh, less than a hundred bucks, because that's not my primary. I'm okay with the retail, but not everybody is. And so that, I just want to point out that that's the noise we hear from your employees and dependents, because we've tried to do this in the past.
Gotcha.
I guess, that's why we're trying to take the temperature, that's why we're trying to take the temperature of the participants, because it is their plan. And if they don't have a major objection, and they want us to get the bundling savings for the health, then let's move forward with bundling all three. If there's a major pushback, and we, we understand that, then we'll, we can go with two. And that's why we're trying to have these conversations, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like that approach. Alderman Danhill.
I agree with Colleen.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the way we should look at this. I mean, it's their insurance. I know of my previous employer, we used to do a wellness screening once a year, and it would save both them and us as the employees a little bit of money.
Right.
So if that's something you guys, if that's what you're looking into when you say the wellness?
Yeah, I mean, that also is, is an, an interesting perspective, Alderman, because one of the things we could do as part of it is to impose a, I don't want to call it a penalty, but a surcharge, if you did not participate and get that biometric screening. I don't know what it does to your contracts, that's where I'll rely on Moses if we do that. But if you don't do it, we have a lot of employers that do that, just so people can take a pulse of their healthcare. Because again, we all get busy, annual checkups are hard to schedule unless you do it a year in advance, and then that becomes problematic. But knowing that you have some of your information upfront, kind of does help that. But again, a wellness surcharge is typically what we can do with some proper guidance and giving people advanced notice. This wellness strategy is just to promote the well-being of what the plans offer, because again, people get lost into all the additional freebies that are part of the plan. Pardon me. So that's, this is important for them to know, but we can continue to add on to that.
Yeah, we would, um, they would bring in some nurses to do your blood work, you'd do it right there, and then if you didn't do it there, you had a certain amount of time to go to your own doctor to have it done. And then, like I said, it was a savings to both employee and to the employer. So that is something. And then, do you, um, offer the HSA as well?
So we've looked at that. The problem we have with the restructuring of how the plans are built with Blue Cross, this is on a unified renewal, which means I can't, I can't make any changes. If I do any changes, it rebalances the rates, which we provided those exhibits to Colleen and Moses. Now, it's interesting, because some of the rates go up really high, some kind of temper down, the overall premium that Blue Cross is going to collect is still the same. So, you know, that, but then that allows me to add the HSA? We would just have to know that, because again, we looked at the rebalancing in order to add another alternative, and we could certainly explore that for next year. But there is some, some higher than lower, and again, bottom line, Blue Cross wants to collect the same premium dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may suggest, if, if it will be okay with the council, I don't need a recommendation from you this evening. We're going to continue to take the pulse of everyone the next couple of weeks, and as we prepare the agenda and the meeting packet for September ninth, based on those discussions, we, staff will put together a recommendation for you to consider on the ninth. There's really not much more to say, you know, about what, about this issue and then the variables involved. I think we had a good talk, and I think you understand, you know, what's at, at play here. So if that's okay, you know, we, we will continue our discussions and listening sessions, you know, the next couple of weeks, and kind of let you know what everyone thinks for the next meeting, but obviously, ultimately, you're going to have to decide on the ninth. If that's okay.
Okay, no other questions? Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Giving us this, uh, lot of information to, to absorb, so we'll, we'll take some time and go through it. And as Moses says, he'll continue to have conversations with the people involved.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into our second conversation. The Oak Forest City Council received presentation from our Assistant Director of Community and Economic Development in regard to the city's comprehensive plan and components that are being put together for that plan, highlight key issues and goals, and review implementation strategies. So Paul, when you're ready, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. Before you guys tonight, I, I think we wanted to spend a little bit of time just reviewing at a high, high level idea of what the comprehensive plan is, what are some of the issues and goals outlined inside of that plan, you know, implementation strategies that were outlined as well, too, and then looking at potential updates, as well as, you know, future discussions on the comprehensive plan. I don't think, you know, we'll, we'll solve everything this evening, we're, we're just, you know, looking at this to make sure we have a, a rough understanding, and we're looking to come back and have, you know, more in thought, in-depth, any, you know, changes and putting stuff together. So, without further ado, the comprehensive plan was adopted in February twelfth, two thousand and eight. What is that? Is an advisory policy guide for land use, development, and public investment decisions. It's been a significant time in between that, what's that? It's, oh, I'm sorry, it, it's not very loud this evening for some reason. Yep. This is replacing the previous nineteen sixty-four comprehensive plan in two thousand and eight, and now it's been an entirely, you know, beyond that length and process from two thousand and eight, as should be looking back at these things every, you know, fifteen to, ten to fifteen years, so. The intentions of the plan is to evaluate development proposals and guide public investments, in revising the zoning code to allow, align with the future land use plan. So, kind of jumping into the chapters and what exactly is covered in, in the plan, and, you know, kind of some of those goals that come out of it. From the community vision, and this obviously was a group setting a number of years ago, the residents generally like Oak Forest, but want to see some improvements. You know, concerns include aging infrastructure, poor traffic flow, and a lack of identity, that being, you know, no center downtown. These are some things that, you know, people still say to this day, so, and a lot of these things, you'll, you'll find that they kind of stand true to the test of time, but it's just a matter of what is the next steps to make those things happen to see, you know, Oak Forest's future today. So those desires included, you know, pedestrian and bicycle connections, aesthetic and stronger design aspects, redevelopment of corridors and metro station area, providing more diverse housing options and local amenities, strategic annexation and boundary agreements to clarify the city boundary, and establish a market strategy to draw in outsiders and shoppers in Oak Forest. And at a different degrees, you know, all of these things have been touched, but it's, you know, trying to find ways to continue to do these things and push those forward. Jumping into the, the character of Oak Forest, being a very family-oriented community with a small-town character, it's multi-generational, with children returning to raise their own families either in their parents' homes or in, you know, town nonetheless. Housing, you know, in comparison to other neighboring communities is still affordable with diverse options available, excellent schools and community facilities and programs, and the connectivity to nearby forest preserves, forests, including the Gulf Corrs and all the trails that connect to Oak Forest nearby. So what is the goal there? Is to strengthen Oak Forest's identity and aesthetics. Some of those priorities include enhancing the gateways and streetscapes, promoting a high-quality landscape, attractive signing, consistent street improvements, architectural design and other decorative elements, preserving open space and integrating sustainable building and green, you know, where, where possible, as well as providing those in terms of access to the trails. And then, lastly, would be expanding cultural and recreational options, including events and activities to draw residents together, both those residents and then as well as, as we spoke before about trying to bring, you know, marketing to Oak Forest to, you know, make it a place that people want to become a resident here by, you know, having a visit. Then moving on to land use, which I think is kind of the bulk of most of the discussion and the, the core values of what city council is utilizing, this includes both existing uses as well as future land uses, which we'll cover in just a moment here. The use is effectively a long-term growth and sustainability for stability in town, which, the priorities of this include, you know, encouraging mixed use and cluster development in key areas, providing more redevelopment over sprawl, as, you know, the city is strained by its current boundaries without a whole lot of options for, you know, infill or expanding development. Focusing on the metro area, one hundred and fifty-ninth and Cicero Avenue is catalyst to future development. And lastly, would be preserving the neighborhood character and ensuring the smooth transition from, you know, commercial into residential is another priority that came out of that. Kind of the typical thing that we are looking at when we're looking at developments is how does that meet with the future land use allowances that we have already designated in two thousand and eight? And as I said, you know, this meeting won't be taking place to where we're, you know, necessarily getting to the nitty-gritty on everything, but this is, I think, a key concern, as I've heard from, you know, different Aldermen, and then as well as planning and zoning, trying to take apart and look at the things and make sure that we, you know, we meet the same goals that we were trying to do in two thousand and eight today. I think a lot of these things are in play and are, you know, things that we're working on or have already put in place. And, you know, we've seen a, a few different changes along the way to kind of pave those things when necessary, but otherwise, everything has been pretty consistent there. So, like I said, that's a, a future discussion on, you know, maybe some of those key development sites that we definitely feel that should be changed or should be re-updated and, and processed in a different way. Moving on to our specific corridors, within the plan, it does identify corridors in the metro station sub, subareas, a specific one that the city definitely wanted to focus in on, the train station nearby with, you know, within the gateway redevelopment subarea overlay that we have in, in play, and then as well as the neighborhoods around that. So with that said, we wanted to see the transformation of the metro area into a vibrant gateway with new and accessible high-quality train station, which was completed, a mixed-use development with retail offices and, and housing, and that's some of the things that we're seeing come through and are continuing to focus in on trying to, you know, incrementally put those in place in Oak Forest. Improve walkability aesthetics and public space, that's something that, you know, we're constantly looking to improve, to add, you know, things, working with metro, making sure our, our bridge is up to speed. All of those things are, you know, things that have been identified, you know, in the past, and as I said, you know, a lot of these things are still true to this day. And then utilizing a new railroad frontage road was another thing that was a key piece that came out of there. Another nice map here to look at is kind of the key details and locations that we were looking at when we originally were looking at the metro station. There, there's much better, nice-looking pictures that we'll see further on, but this is kind of just a general use understanding with a mix of, you know, retail, mixed-use, multifamily, and the ways that the city was looking to implement the changes to the metro station area. So included with that was a reconstruction and re-identifying of a frontage street along the metro station that cuts basically straight through the metro parking lot. This is something that obviously hasn't gotten farther than, you know, set in plan, but there's some definitely cool and interesting elements that were taught and, and discussed. And obviously, in two thousand and eight, the plan was, you know, a, a large pictured idea, and a lot of things happened in between then, not too long, you know, with the, the housing crisis and, and different things that went on not too long after two thousand and eight. There has been, you know, a kind of a standstill, and some of the projects there have not necessarily seen through, but there has definitely been incremental changes, as we've seen, you know, at the corner of one hundred and fifty-ninth and Cicero. And as I said, here is a kind of a more graphical depiction here of what they were, you know, seeing in that place, with, with, you know, LeMans actually being closed off at one hundred and fifty-eighth, as well as Laverne. I mean, obviously, these are more futuristic plans, but these are, you know, things that the city has to, you know, grasp and ma, make sure we think of if this is still something that, you know, we are, you know, identifying to want to do in the future. And kind of some of the things that have been proposed in this plan were, were great ideas, but, you know, never necessarily saw through, and obviously, we, as I talked, there's been some challenges that had, the city has faced in, in the time, but nonetheless to, to say here, there is, you know, steps and ways now that we're, you know, starting to do a lot better than what we were at before, to be able to make some of these changes come to play here. And now lastly, here is a render of that area there, looking at the train station on the left, some kind of, you know, more pedestrian ways, feeling more of like a downtown with a, you know, plaza-type structure there in the middle. And then basically, you know, trying to find ways to, to, you know, make those steps happen, make the conversations that need to be said, and just, you know, try to see this forward. So that's the corridor, kind of stepping in, back into, you know, the mind of the entire city as a whole, housing, and then I have just a hand, maybe two more, I believe, chapters after that, and then I have a couple reviews, and then we'll get back to, you know, passing this on. So, under the housing category, we are requesting and still continuing to look to promote a mix of housing types that meet the diverse needs, including the affordable entry level and senior housing, as those things still stand today, and, you know, things that we've been looking at, and trying to, you know, push onto those next generations, whether they be the ones above us or the, the ones after us. Townhomes and, and low-maintenance units near the transit corridors over there, those are things that we're still seeing to this day. Supporting maintenance and rehab of older homes, you know, those are, are things that the building department is seeing quite often, you know, a few infill houses and then a few things like that. But if there's any, you know, ways that the city can get involved, that, that would be something that would be helpful to keep these things staying in a, a good shape. And then encouraging infill development on underutilized lots, you know, nonetheless, the city has actively been pursuing any properties that may be derelict or, you know, things that have become security issues or, or stuff like that in order to reutilize them in a proper way for redevelopment. And then lastly, partnering with developers to introduce new housing styles, and, you know, we continue to leave those doors open, as well as we have, you know, a few developers that are continuing to stick around town. Community facilities and services, this is, you know, kind of more infrastructure base, you know, providing service providers with quality facilities and services, improving access to parks and recreational amenities and locations and spaces, addressing infrastructure needs particularly in stormwater and water systems, as we have significant areas of flooding and, you know, some infrastructure that needs to be updated, and just making sure that we're staying on top of that, so that's not necessarily just in the, the realm of my department, but just a understanding of the city as a whole. And encouraging shared use of facilities such as schools, churches, and other places for community events. You know, the city has very limited options, and, you know, unless something, you know, large happens at the hospital site, there's, you know, little options for places to do that, but just trying to use the community spaces that we have and, you know, make the best out of them, and, you know, relating to other departments as well as other organizations. Moving to transportation, as we said, you know, continuing to allow for vehicle access, reducing the congestion, but at the same time, you know, providing safe and connected bicycle and pedestrian network, connecting the disjointed areas as our parts in town, you know, I stuck with IDOT and county jurisdictions, making sure those pedestrian ways are safe and ways for children and, you know, all pedestrians as a whole to be able to pass through, adding sidewalks and trails and crosswalks along those major corridors, as I just said. Increase parking and access to the metro station, I think those are a lot of things that we have already worked on and assembled and put together, and, you know, working with the neighboring developments and such to be able to cater to, you know, any city needs there. And then designating priority routes for non-vehicle or traveler, so being like off-street, you know, bike trails, like we we have proposed on Central then, as well as, you know, looking in ways in the neighborhoods as, you know, there's parts in town that we're working on sidewalks and different connection points, but there's other ones that are not, you know, as well connected and making sure everyone feels safe as they're traveling through their neighborhoods, you know, whether it be kids, adults, or anyone else alike. So just, you know, kind of a blurb here with the map that's provided with the transportation plan. The key crosswalk, bike, and pedestrian enhancements are in the green circles, as you could see all in the green circles, as you could see all in the green circles, as you could see all sound, but within, you know, these key areas that would have intersection connectivity. And then as well as all of the colored markings there, different trails and connections, pedestrian, bikeways, all of these different things that we've identified. And not only within the comprehensive plan, we also had a future non-motorized plan that also identified additional locations for bike infrastructure. And then lastly, the Natalie Creek Plan, which all of those three things kind of sandwiched together, you know, has, you know, the stretch of a good network, but is in one concentration part of town. And just looking for those key elements, continuing to look for grants and opportunities to continue to push some of those elements and projects through. And then lastly, here is economic development, something that the city definitely stresses, you know, not only the city-owned properties, but then as well as the existing vacancies under private ownership. Continuing to attract and retain businesses and stop the retail leakage, as we've spoken of before, the concentration in Crestwood, the concentration down in Country Club Hills, the concentration of commercial over in Tinley, Orland Park, 159th and Harlem. Identifying those locations and places and trying to find things that can fall in between the cracks and continue to be able to, you know, push Oak Forest forward as, you know, an opportunity for places that aren't in those places. That's the challenge we have there when, you know, everyone's pulling a radius and looking at Oak Forest. If they're already in those locations, it becomes more challenging for them to cannibalize on their own clientele there. So with that, you know, we continue to, you know, push forward. You know, we take all requests with a grain of salt, but we do push forward and ask, you know, any of those businesses interested and, you know, try to push those forward. So I'm definitely interested if anyone has any ideas that we're, you know, missing there. As we have already done, redeveloping vacant and underutilized commercial properties such as Ace Hardware, 157th and Cicero, annexing additional land like we had with the senior development, continuing to support local businesses through incentives and marketing. We do have the facade improvement grant, you know, continuing to look and see if there's other opportunities. And we're always asking with the businesses or prospective developers if there's something that somebody else is doing, you know, kind of bring it in our direction. We could take a look at it, see if it's something that makes sense that we can apply here. Continuing to rebrand and promote Oak Forest to attract investment. And since this plan put in place, we did the rebranding, new logo, you know, pushed forward, updates on the website, and continuing to move back forward. And that's already been quite an interesting direction that we've gotten because we've gotten a lot of feedback. We've even gotten different, you know, promotions from other people saying that, you know, we have a good setup there. So there's definitely some pride there in what we have put in place. And then lastly was revising zoning and codes to support businesses and growth and design quality. And those are things that we continue to do, continue to look at, you know, code amendments, cutting through red tape, making sure that, you know, we're thinking of all different elements, you know, whether they're, you know, pressing matters here in Oak Forest or they're just new things that are coming out, but we're trying to, you know, make sure we have what we need to feel safe, but at the same time, continue to push forward with, you know, pushing the button. So going lastly to the implementation, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission with, you know, my staff continues to recommend implementation processes to city council, making plans, our code amendments, as well as, you know, planning for allocating funds into, you know, initiating any of these plans. And these are obviously, you know, some big picture items that we have in these, and just trying to get an understanding of, you know, what's the lowest hanging fruit and what's the most important things that we need to do in order to see some of those things through. Multifamily residential district regulations, identifying appropriate tax amendments to better achieve the objectives of the city. I think some of those things have already started to take place, but there is additional things that we've, you know, been looking at in order to make sure that we're being consistent or permissive as any other, you know, municipality around us, not, you know, trying to be outside of the norm as far as being more restrictive than what others are doing in the neighboring communities. Lawable uses in that metro station area, just continuing to push forward that we're not looking for gas stations, auto-oriented types of uses. I think that's something that, you know, this group as well as staff, you know, pretty much cuts off before it gets started. You know, that's something that we're not interested in in our area there to kind of break that really pedestrian-friendly area down. Properties where residential are currently zoned for commercial use, this is something that was completed. There is a bunch of properties on LeMans Avenue that were zoned commercial as well as a few properties that we dealt with a number of years ago south of 159th Street that had a commercial frontage as well as they had a single-family home. And we had carved out allowances to allow those types of uses and given flexibility that if there was a business to expand west of Cicero, that there is still that flexibility to build a parking lot or build additional building or whatever that may be to continue commercial in whatever standpoint that that was originally intended. A mixed-use district regulation, so that was something that was put into a subarea, which was the Gateway Redevelopment Overlay District, also called the Gateway Redevelopment Subarea, which is before us this evening to become a formal zoning district rather than a zoning overlay on the city council meeting. Implementing and creating design standards, which were already done a few years back and continue to be pushed in the planning and zoning design elements. As I said, providing a capital improvement program geared towards the goals and policies put forward in this plan. So I think this is something that we definitely need to, you know, start to look into implement now that we have, you know, some wherewithal to start to process, whether it be incremental or, you know, something that we, you know, continue to do over the next few years. And then plan review, continuing to look at this plan, continuing to update this. This plan indicated in the plan it should be looked at every 10 years. So the last time would have been 2018, which we kind of skipped that over. 2028 would be the following 10 years after that. We're somewhere in the middle there. So looking at it today, you know, not saying that we have, you know, we're making any drastic changes this evening. We're just looking at it. We've taken, you know, one step, you know, in that process. You know, these are all in the plan, and that's something I could send around to the group here. It's also available on our website. I would be happy to continue, you know, the review and discussions on, you know, what changes we want to make. So kind of one last slide here, I kind of have more rhetorical questions here, but in kind of understanding what the next steps that we're looking to do. You know, this is the community vision of 2008. Is that still applicable today? If not, you know, well, how should this change? Are there goals or and policies in the community still applicable, or is that something that we need to look at, reorganizing? Does this current economy support the future land uses identified in 2008? Should any of those uses be changed or refined here? The character of this area, should the existing character change? You know, is there some type of land use, changes that we're seeing or building types that, you know, may have not necessarily been reflected in this original plan that we're seeing today? I am, you know, pretty inclined to say that a lot of these things still stand true to this day. I've talked to a number of council members on kind of their interests and, you know, what they see in the future plans. And it seems like a lot of these identified interests here and changes are all things that we've worked on, all things that we're all striving for, you know, in doing so. And then lastly being, are we interested in growing or are we interested in staying the same? You know, what is identified here in the plan is continuing to look to re-implement themselves, reconfigure ways to be able to make development work, to bring down, you know, the overhead of having a bunch of vacant properties around, not collecting taxes, and looking in size of growing, you know, Oak Forest in multiple ways, whether that be with businesses, residential, you name it. So kind of next steps here, confirmation of the current plan, looking at, you know, the future land use, the metro subarea, reviewing of other applicable plans. As I said, there is a housing plan that we did a few years back, kind of identifying, you know, the types of hurdles and issues that we have there, then as well as, you know, what we should be looking at. And then as well as I said, the non-motorized plan, which is looking at implementing different pedestrian and bike improvements. And then lastly, developing the framework of the gateway, you know, looking at that capital improvements plan, trying to make steps to make sure not only the developers are making the steps to make it, you know, address, but also the city is, you know, taking the steps to make it presentable to, you know, someone looking to move into that area. So lastly, I just put up the maps here, just in case there was any discussion with that. But with that, that's all I have.
Any questions?
It's like a 300-page document.
It's a lot. Thanks, Paul. That was a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Let's move to citizens' participation. Anyone want to address the city council at this point? Okay. I will look for a motion to adjourn the committee to the whole. Alderman Emmett made the motion. Alderman Danahill, second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Alderman Danahill.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, since we're a little bit behind, we're going to take about a five to seven-minute break, and then we'll come back to start our regular city council meeting.